All right, everyone. It is now 12 o'clock. I want to call this workshop to order. And Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you to start with.
Okay. You want me to call the city attorney mayor?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Give me my holler.
Okay.
City Attorney requests that he be a phone call in instead of showing up.
Hey, good morning, Adam, Mr. Jim. Hey, I'm going to put you on the speaker. Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Today, we're here today to have a discussion on the Esag Gulf Air Sewer System. In our last commission meeting, the board wanted to further discussion with Esag in reference to the sewer system.
Okay. And he said you're here. You want to position? Come on up.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity. What I'd like to do is have our attorney that's been a big help to us with the Public Service Commission. He's going to go over the report that we have done. And then I'll make a statement, and then we'll do our proposal. Okay? Gene?
If you would, sir, please state your name and sign in for me.
Sign in. Sign in.
I need you to pick up the tab.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gene Adams. I work for the Pennington Law Firm in Tallahassee. And as Mr. Cypher said, I have been working with Beech's Sewer, Esag Enterprises, doing some Public Service Commission work. And as you all are acutely aware, you know, it's been difficult trying to work to keep the system going. There were customers who were lost because of the damage to their homes and things of that nature. Like I say, you all are very acutely aware of that. What we'd like to do today is we'd like to go over with you, and I think you just received a copy of the report. This report was prepared by an engineer recommended by the Rural Water Association, of which both the city and Beech's Sewer are a member. So what they, rather than their staff do the report, they recommended an outside independent engineer perform that report, and that's what you see before you. It was first done in 2016, and then was updated in 2017. Now, since that time, there's also been some upgrades to the system. We'll go through that as we discuss the report. But if you would, if you would turn to page two down at the bottom, you will see that most of this system was installed in '84, '85, when the Gulf Air and the seashore developments were built. And the system inventory that the engineer then begins to go through, there are the last two paragraphs on page two tell you that there's, there are three lift stations that this wastewater plant utilizes, lift station one and lift station two. Lift station three serves the Jericho Community and also then pumps into the Gulf Air Community Sanitary Sewer System as well. The system comprises about 16,000 feet of 8-inch sewer main, 1,600 feet of 6-inch sewer main, and about 950 feet of 2-inch sewer mains, three lift stations, and then 58 manholes. Now, there's a little bit of discrepancy. I think he found 62 manholes versus the 58, but it's in that neighborhood, around 60 manholes for maintaining the system. The report then talks about the condition of the system. And when this report was first done, the report notes that two of the manholes, excuse me, two of the lift stations needed repair. They needed both some maintenance pumps and control panels, which were corroded generally because they're in fairly close proximity to the seashore and the salt water. Since that time and since the hurricane, two of those pumps, or two of those lift stations have been totally reworked and are in excellent shape. And then the third pump, third lift station, rather, is little utilized. And as he states in his report, it's in very good shape, and it continues to be in good shape. It was first installed in 2004 and continues to be in excellent shape as well. The system itself, it currently serves about 317 customers. And under the proposal that we're going to look at, which would allow redevelopment of the wastewater treatment plant site, that would add approximately 40 customers, or 31 customers, I'm sorry. So you'd wind up with a total of about 424 customers when this wastewater treatment plant site was redeveloped. The treatment plant's currently permitted with DEP. It operates well, and in fact, during the hurricane, through some superhuman efforts, it was back online the following day of the hurricane, and has been pumping and maintaining sewage system to serve all of its customers since that time. There were some inflow issues that the engineers noted, but they primarily occurred during high rain events. And that's fairly consistent with most other wastewater treatment plants in the state. You get a lot of inflow from manholes and other things of that nature because of high water. So that is not really unusual at all. And that is noted on pages four and five. Then to continue, the engineer then looked at evaluation of the system. He looked at all of the facilities. He looked at the useful life. And then looks also at replacement value. If you had to go out and purchase all this equipment as new, what is that replacement value? And then that is on the back of the page six, and you look at the system valuation. He goes through the wastewater collection system, its current condition and value, with approximately remaining useful life there. And you see that it's estimated at about 856,000 with a replacement value of $1,316 if you had to purchase everything. Manholes, the same thing. You see there, they have about a 25, 20 to 45-year life. They're approximately 55% of their useful life. To replace each of those is about $15,000, and again, an estimated current value of $479,000 with a replacement value of $870,000. Then similarly, the force mains, you know, if you just had to pull up the line, the 2-inch, 3-inch, 4-inch, 6-inch, replace that, that's PVC. Current value is $54,000, replacement value of $84,000. And then finally, the lift stations, all of which are in excellent shape at this time, they are expensive. They're estimated at about $75,000 currently in value with about $150,000 to replace each one of those. So as you can see, you know, a going concern such as a sewer system does have a fairly substantial value. And of course, it also then generates revenue each month as people pay for the services that they receive. The current value, as we stated, it does not include the water treatment plant because the proposals that we're going to look at for you would take the water treatment plant offline, which is a goal that the county, I think, would like to achieve, and would also then consolidate water treatment services from the city and partly in the county. The ultimate goal and the stated goal of legislature this year, and there's been a real emphasis on getting people off of septic tanks and onto sewer wherever possible. This is particularly, they're looking at giving some local government, a lot of local government with some matching funds down in the southeast corner of the state in particular, around the Mosquito Lagoon, Martin County, St. Lucie County, down that way because of the, those algae blooms and the green soup that appeared in the Indian River Lagoon. And you're going to see emphasis on that in the springs as well. There'll be some money for, I think, Blue Springs this year in Marianna, but in particular, Silver Springs on the side of all of the first magnitude springs you're going to see. Trying to get people off of septic tank anywhere in the area there, the water basin that drains into those springs. But that'll eventually filter down to Northwest Florida. Water Management District will also be doing that for everyone, just trying to get people off and preserve water quality. So with that, I guess we can answer some questions you may have on the system itself. We do want to make a little proposal and discuss that. And I'm looking to see if Mr. Cypher, is it my turn still? If you don't have any questions, but we'd be glad to answer any questions.
I got a couple of questions. Have you given information about this type of structure in the past? And in other words, do you have a background in what would give you the authority in my mind to say that a lift station is in excellent condition?
Now, Mr. Adams, look. No. He's an attorney.
Okay. Where did that statement come from?
All right. It's in that study the engineer did. What we did, we went to Florida Water Water, that we're members of, and it's city members of. And we said, we need to have our system evaluated. And met with their head engineer, and he said, you know, we do that all the time. And then later, he called and said, look, we don't want to do it because we're members? You're members.
Right.
So they hired a third-party engineer, and that's the one whose name's on the report. He did the study. He works with wastewater treatment plants throughout the study. He has the experience to do it. And so all of that is his work, not ours. We had no input into it.
Would you refer me to where it says in the report?
Yes, sir. You look on page seven.
In excellent condition. And I appreciate the study that was done. That is what I've been asking for, so I commend you on actually having a study done. I appreciate that.
If you look at paragraph two of the conclusions, it says it is in very good condition. But since this report was done, the Public Service Commission required a reworking of one of the lift stations prior to receiving a rate increase that Mr. Cypher applied for. So that was completed. And then since then, after the hurricane, the second lift station has also been totally reworked. So we feel like the lift stations, which are less than a year old, both of them, are in, are in excellent shape, very good shape. We'll stand by very good, but they're in excellent shape. They were just repaired, just totally repaired and reworked, as was the electrical control panels for both of them.
That's the only question I had at this time.
I just, I have a comment. It says, the same comment, paragraph two of conclusions, that it's in very good condition. And I'm reading several parts in the report. It talks about wet well, the bottom of the wet well, three feet below the lowest sanitary sewer entered. It was full of dirt and could not be determined what valves were installed. Recommended this dirt be removed. I get this report appears.
All that's been, all that's been done.
All been done.
Yeah, it was all done during the rework of both of the conclusions.
You mentioned the 400, roughly 10 customers. In the report, I'm showing an active number of customers, 317. What's, what is the actual number? Just today? Hold on a second. And I say actual.
And that's varied some because some of the zones are no longer there. Some have been made habitable again, you know, and people are coming back online, so.
That number almost changes daily. In fact, this morning, I had a call from somebody whose house has not been livable is now livable. We have, present time, 254, I went back up, 255 customers. We've lost because of the hurricane, 79 houses were either destroyed or made unlivable. Of them, nine, 10 have come back online.
I have a question about maintenance. Will the city be responsible for maintenance?
There's been no offer.
Yes, if purchased, yes, you would. But, but not for the wastewater treatment?
That's what I'm talking about.
Not the plant itself. It would have nothing to do with the plant.
What about the pipes under the ground throughout the community?
You'd have to take care of it.
So that's different from the proposal that the county was involved with Restore Act money?
No, not necessarily. And we'll go over that when we give you our proposal.
Okay.
And it feels to me like prior offers, a lot of this work hadn't been done. There hasn't been more work done. I think we're all waiting to hear what the offer would be, what the proposal would be at this point.
All right. Let me give you a little background, if you would. We took over this system in December of 2000. My partner at that time was Tom Green. And when we took it over, we was under a moratorium from DEP in Gulf County that we could not hook any new customers to our system. Within six months, we had that lifted. We got back to good graces with the county. And the county, problem with the previous owner was he wouldn't communicate with them. Of course, we talked to the county. We live here, he did. We kept the sewer rate the same for 17 years, mostly because my partner and I were scared to apply for a rate increase because we didn't know what was involved, and we also heard that customers would go crazy at public meetings, and we didn't want the hassle. In June of 2014, Tom Green wants to leave the company and told him he was leaving. At the same time, I had a heart attack. At the same time, I had three businesses, my wife and I was running, one of which was 200 miles away that I had to go to every week. So at that time, I made an offer to the city. And the offer at that time was we would, I would sell the city, the lines, lift stations to customers, not the plant, for $950,000, and I would finance 100% of it. During the months that followed, one of the commissioners asked me to reduce the price, which I did, by $50,000. After six months, I got tired of dealing with the city, and I decided to pull my offer, which I did. I, based on the value that I know now, that $900,000 offer I made to the city, the city would have gotten infrastructure worth about $1,007,000. That's not a bad deal that I made to the city. Plus, the city probably could have put, in my opinion, sensing another $400,000 into the city's pocket. So basically, my pulling that offer from the city cost the citizens of this town about $1,002,000. Now, what's the status? My heart's fine, you know? Got rid of that other business, and that probably helped my heart. We applied for a rate increase. It wasn't easy. The public meeting was nothing. One person, only thing he complained about was of the city's water, which we had no control over. The Public Service Commission gave us a 34% increase in our rate. Plus, told us that if we would do certain items, we would get another rate increase. We did those items, and sometime, and in August, they're going to vote on what that rate will be. I don't have a clue right now. In addition to that, all utilities in the state of Florida have a price index that they could put into effect. We never did it for the first 18 years or 19 years that we had the system. Now we're doing it. We're going to be getting one for the year 2018. Don't know what that amount is, but, and also for 2019. And that rate increases will go into effect in the next two months. We lost 79 customers, a lot, 23% of our customers. We're operating at a profit right now. We're making money. That's not bad, you know? Of course, I'm a CPA. I want to make sure we make money, you know? I don't like losing money. I got rid of one business that cost me money. But we don't have to sell this one. You know, we're making money, paying everything, doing fine. Our customers are going to build back up. So whether you buy it or not, we're going to still make money down the road. And at this time, we'd like to present our proposal.
So, and again, just to sort of elaborate on Mr. Cypher's point, the Public Service Commission every year calculates based on the CPI index, the rate of inflation, and that sort of thing, and comes up with a, an automatic, so to speak, cost of living index that you can apply to your rates. You can also, of course, get back any direct costs that have increased over the years, such as taxes have increased, or if, for instance, you purchase treatment from someone else, you merely are pumping to a treatment plan, and those prices go up, then you of course can add that to your rates as well in order to stay current with your rates. As you can see, option one would be for the city, as I was just talking about, the city would handle the waste, and the waste treatment plant would be taken offline. There is a gravity, I think, or force main is very close to our sewer main, and the interconnect would be fairly inexpensive to accomplish. And then the Beech's Sewer would continue to have its own customers, its own lines and lift stations that it would be responsible for. It would pay the city 5.28 per 1,000 gallons of effluent handle, which would be metered, of course. We would bill the customers, and of course, the rates would continue to be determined by the Florida Public Service Commission. The city would provide then the monthly report detailing the water usage, which would be at no cost, and then we bill based on those usage rates. The rate then would increase only by the amount the city charges other customers, and that is, if the water rate goes up on all the other city customers, then the rate would go up by the same amount for Beech's Sewer. And as Mr. Cypher has indicated, this would also have to be approved by the Public Service Commission, which would then make any appropriate changes that might be necessary in the rate base because we'd no longer be operating the wastewater treatment plant. However, there would be some offset because, again, we would be paying a treatment cost for that. PSC sets the service area as well, and so the service area would remain the same for Beech's Sewer. The second option, which starts at the very bottom of the page, would be that the city would purchase the system outright. The purchase price would be $1,539,000. That would be discounted by $289,000. Now, what we did not talk about in the report, the engineer had made a finding that, or rather, I guess the city had asked for some additional costs, that in order to collect and pump the sewage through the existing force main, that they felt it would be necessary to add an additional lift station with some more powerful pumps. The engineer does not believe that that's necessary, and in fact, he feels that would stress the system and in fact would overload the system according to his calculations. Now, I'm going to tell you, I am not an engineer, and I can't tell you how dry the calculations he made here, how accurate they are, or whether or not you'll need that lift station. But the discount that we're providing, we believe, would take care of that. It provides $289,000. If you need that lift station, it can be constructed out of that fund. Then the county would use some of its money, $400,000, to take the water treatment plant offline and then to provide, which would provide the opportunity to redevelop that and into 31 lots, we think approximately, which would add to the tax base of the county and would be overall beneficial to the county as well. The range would be about 1.25 million, or 850,000, I guess it would be. And Mr. Cypher is willing to discuss terms on that to benefit of he and the county as to have what those terms would be for the payoff of that remaining amount of $850,000. So that's the offer. It's $850,000. For outright purchase. And then the other, of course, is.
I'd like to.
Can you maintain that?
To thank Frank for, I mean, we've been dealing with this for about five years now, I know. And the two options, all I've ever heard is option two, with different price tags going up and down. I really like the way option one looks. It's basically structured the same, I believe, Jim, but correct me if I'm wrong, or John, but this is what we do out at Barrier Dunes, is it not?
No, this would be, this is for lines of a wholesale rate. With Barrier Dunes, we can directly bill the customers.
Okay. Would it be easier administratively to handle it this way?
As far as the billing, yes. As far as one bill, yes, sir, that is correct. Now, as far as the numbers, I don't know. I haven't looked at them.
Okay.
What does the city currently pay? I see where it says we will pay $5.28 per 1,000 gallons of actual effluent handled. But would it, tell me what rate we're using?
I don't have the ratio right in front of me, but basically, what you have is you have a base rate plus you, do you have a monthly?
The rate is $7.28 per 1,000 gallons.
Plus a base rate.
Customers, plus the basic rate.
Seven?
Seven twenty-eight per 1,000.
That's what we're currently charging.
Customers, that's correct.
So when we entertain purchasing the customers at Barrier Dunes, what are we currently receiving per 1,000 gallons? Seven dollars?
What we do is we do one bill, and it's broken down per customer out there. So basically, what happens is we send it to HOA, that breaks it down with a base rate for each one of those units, plus that $7.28.
So with option one, correct me if I'm looking at this wrong, we would actually be recouping only $2 per 1,000 gallons?
No.
That's why I said, correct me.
I think the $7 is the retail rate for.
That's what we charge.
That's the retail rate.
Yeah, we're paying $5.
$5.28 is what you would be paying.
Right.
Okay.
To treat our water only, you would have no responsibility for making so the lines and whatnot, which is what I assume that retail rate clears.
That's correct.
You keep $2.
Because we're maintaining the lines, maintaining the lift station.
That's what I was kind of concerned about, the maintenance. Option one sounds a lot better than option two to me, but I still need some time to look at. I'm not ready to make a decision right now, but I like option one. I'd like for you to give me some time to next meeting on Tuesday so I can look over some things and then make my decision.
Now, one thing you need to realize, either option has to be approved by the Public Service Commission. Option one, it basically will be a new rate structure for us, and it will probably take at least 24 months for that to happen.
But you're in no hurry, correct? Based on what you said a minute ago, that you're making money now, and the offer is either buy it or don't buy it. As far as the timeline, let's talk about a timeline, because I think that's critical.
Timeline, if you decide not to buy it and want to go this route, we're keeping it for 24 months. And, you know, basically, you have to wait. twenty-four months, and, you know, basically, you have to wait twenty-four months down the road to see what we can do then.
Right. Would that be okay with you?
That's not what I'd like, no.
But the fact that you're producing a profit now.
Correct, and I will be making more.
Is there any kind of demand on the seller's side as far as when the city of Port St. Joe would have to give you a formal offer on the option of purchasing either option one or option two, or saying no?
I don't have a timeframe on that.
Would you be okay with three months?
I don't have the reason being, we have somebody else that wants to buy our system.
And that, that's fine. I understand that.
And I don't know what their timeframe is. I hadn't talked to them long, so I don't know, but.
Well, I think that's a fair, this is a lot of information.
We're not going away.
Right.
Okay.
So would you be okay with three months for a response?
I mean, either way, yeah, I guess so.
Okay. I just don't wanna push something like this. I like, you know by now, I'm a facts guy. I like to dig into the pros, the cons. The other thing that I would like to look at, and I asked for it to be here today, was the last five years of DEP inspections, state inspections of the facility. I think that's fair. I'm surprised it's not included in the report. If it is, I missed it. Could we get that information, Frank?
On the inspection on the lines?
Well.
Of the, or what?
Let me ask you this. Is the site inspected by the state or by DEP? Who does that? Who monitors it?
DEP inspects it.
Right.
They do it every year.
Do they give you like a report after an inspection?
Yeah, they give you a report.
Can we get that information? I think that's the information we would need.
The last one's pretty old. They haven't been real good about Dune inspections. Now, they have, believe it or not, have come out since the hurricane, and during the, you know, right after the hurricane, to know how we was operating. Because, you know, we kept operating. We never really shut down. And I'll have to give Patrick all the credit for that, because he's the one that had his people putting gasoline into generators, diesel fuel in the generators. And DEP did come out to make sure we was handling everything. And so, yeah, I'll give you anything you want.
Yeah, I think it would help, it would definitely help me make a decision to find out, you know, the, how the past inspections have gone, if they identified an issue, or they may have praised you for having a good system, and that would also benefit.
You're talking about DEP?
Yes. Yeah, well, generally, they're gonna be inspecting the plant, of course. Nobody really inspects the lines, you know, that requires a lot more. Right, that would be the next step, is I would wanna know, you know, how many lines have you had to mend? How many breakages have you dealt with in the last five years?
In the last five years?
Yeah.
None.
See, that's.
How about the last twenty years? Two.
Two broke lines in twenty years? That's good.
None broke. Two that got clogged. You know, our lines are buried fifteen feet, ten feet into the ground. They're PVC, unlike the cities that have that other, whatever that clay stuff is.
Yeah.
PVC pipe don't seem to tear up as much. Roots don't get down to our lines. This is a horrible thing. We don't have problems with our lines themselves. Problems we've had is with our lift stations. Of course, both of them have been completely redone, and we have problems with the ponds, which have all been redone.
Would you be open to allowing our city representative, Mr. Grantland, I know he looked at the place in the past, I think?
Anybody can look at.
Okay, so we could come out there and do a visual inspection, or, yeah, I think that would definitely be something that the city would be interested in.
I don't have a problem.
Frank, I've got a question for you. Says here the county agrees to pay to connect to the city's lines. Is that if it requires a lift station? I know there's some conjecture of whether or not it needs a lift station or not. Is the county all in to hook it up however it needs to be done?
The county was gonna give the city five hundred thousand dollars. I figure a hundred thousand to pay for that. Plus, we're discounting the price, a couple hundreds of thousands, so.
So option one would also be based on PSC and the county's agreement as well? So there's three parties that have to come together there. Next question, the thousand gallons of effluent, how many thousands of gallons do you go through on average in a year?
Oh, I've got the latest PSC report, which Mr. Seifer is in the middle of filing the due, and it's due, I think, May first, I think you're due, but it's in the, it's several, it's millions of gallons. Is it in the operating section, or is it in the, it says the finance, it's in the operating section.
And Kevin, I would be asking you the same question, Matt.
Sure.
With thirteen, is it thirteen million? Thirteen million, this is two thousand seventeen. Thirteen million, four hundred twenty-six thousand gallons.
Okay.
Annually.
And annually.
And that varies seasonally with the residents.
And Kevin, how much does our plant currently, what's the effluent on our plant now?
We're running about a point, one-eight MGD. This is a point oh-seven MGD plant. That's kind of what we're looking at in the numbers. So it's a small influx in the plant.
I'm trying to come up with, you know, the annual revenues brought to the city divided by the cost to treat it. So what percentage of your revenues are spent on the treatment of the water? And would this even cover that? Are we gonna take on so much sewage that we're really losing money because of the additional chemical?
I would have to do the math myself, I guess, so.
Okay, that's the question in my head that I'm gonna try to get around to. So again, of course, we're not making any decisions today. It's just a workshop, but that is something that would influence my decision.
So the consensus, it seems to me, is we look at option one, is that what everybody's like? I mean, I just want. So y'all wanna?
Do we wanna give staff some direction on what do we want from them? I mean, my question is, you know, how much will thirteen and a half million gallons generate for the city? And how much is it gonna cost to treat that additional? You know, if you can come up with that figure, you're a smart guy.
And too, one of my main concerns is what we need to think about is, it's gonna be a partnership, and we're gonna rely on you guys to keep it up and running, and you're gonna rely on us in some form or fashion, so.
There's gonna have to be some language in an agreement.
Well, and if the county's building a lift station, whose is it? Who maintains it? You know, lift stations have a lifespan.
It's probably gonna be ours.
So we gotta consider that in there as well. Maintenance and upkeep with a five dollar and twenty-eight cent per thousand gallon rate, so, and if you look at that, too.
And also, if we pick that up, we might have to look at hiring more staff. I mean, we're already stretched out as is.
Depends on what we do. I mean, option one, obviously, Mr. Seifer still owns it, so we wouldn't have any labor. If we picked up a station, we would just acquire a third station out at the beach, so, you know, we, I don't know how much labor intensive that would be.
Okay. What is, I'd like Jim to weigh in on, because I'm not an expert on this either, so I like your opinion, I like Mr. Grantland's opinion. John, I'd like for you to weigh in on, just in concept, to walk us through option one. And then, Jim, I'd like information from you as to how does this differ from what we have done in the past with Barrier Dunes? As far as, I understand the billing is different, that's not an issue with me, but as far as what is the deal we struck in the past with Barrier Dunes? And what kind of deal did we work out when we bought the customers from Mexico Beach? I realize that with water, the sewer is a whole other, it's a lot easier to get water than it is to deal with sewer. That much I do know. So what's your thoughts on option one in regards to what we have done in the past?
Kevin, I haven't dug into it early, this is the first time I see it myself, but just on the premises, looking at it, as far as billing, it's easy. You're looking at one bill, Mr. Seifer, as far as the billing. You're looking at wholesale water rates versus retail. Everything we do right now is based on retail. We don't have any wholesale, so this is a wholesale rate. So yes, somebody mentioned, we need to see the cost of treating the sewer versus what you're gonna charge here. I don't have that calculator on there. But basically, looking at what you're looking here, if you look on page six, just preliminary looking of the peak hour design of flow, my next question would be, okay, are we gonna read the water meters? Are we gonna, are we gonna send Mr. Seifer to bill based on what we read on the water meters? Or are we gonna look at some type of flow meter at the plant? Would be the big thing that would determine how many, how many gallons would we be charging Mr. Seifer?
Right, I was wondering about that, how do you determine how many tons?
Right now, what we do is we read water meters like Barrier Dunes, we read Mr. Rish's water meters. We bill based on water meter usage on there, so that would be something that would need to be looked at on that.
Do you have an answer for that?
I don't think it's just a.
How you calculate what you owe the city?
I didn't read through all of it yet. So then you got actual flow versus a water meter.
The city will provide us with a report detailing the water usage for our customers.
Yeah, so it'll be based on our water meters. Which we capture, we capture that already, so that's just a matter of putting that into a file and calculating based on those actual costs, and that's in there now, so that's easy, so.
And calculated on the rate that we are currently charging all of our other customers?
No. His proposal was five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Again, wholesale rate, not the seven.
So basically, based on what I hear, then you would take those calculations on that basis, and then multiply times five twenty-eight, which we could figure that number.
So would it be fair to say that we would be making less money than what we're accustomed to making, and we would still be treating the sewer at our, at our plant?
Without the maintenance of.
Without the maintenance.
The sewer.
Right.
Well, the fact that you've got one bill, we're having to bill each customer individually out of Barrier Dunes.
That one we sent went to the HOA. We calculated all, but it's true. Billing's simple on this. Trying to figure out exactly what you're looking at on the cost budget. No maintenance, one bill.
Yeah, my fear would also be just that, you know, if we set precedent with the rate that we gave to Barrier Dunes, and why would they not come back to us and say, "We want this lower rate"? So it's just a precedent thing to me, and I don't know, the answer to that is, what makes this different than that setup, you know?
Wholesale water, the wholesale rate. We've not established a wholesale rate.
But would Barrier Dunes qualify for that?
Well.
What's the qualification? Can I get it wholesale at my house? I mean, what's the, what's the qualification to get it wholesale?
Normally, wholesalers are to another system.
Okay.
Like in Bay County, a lot of the municipalities actually wholesale the rate, and then they retail it out, just like Mr. Seifer did. So this is not uncommon to be able to do those type of things. You just gotta figure out what the cost is for the treatment process.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, there's, don't get me wrong, there's definitely a value in eliminating your lagoon. It's always had problems. The smells are unbearable. Now, granted, these aren't our taxes, these aren't our people, but, you know, there are customers, water customers, that are suffering the smells of it at times, so I'd love to see it go away.
You're saying our systems do.
Your systems do. Well, but it takes a lot of crap.
What is the main reason for your interest in selling a, it's a business in my mind that is making money? A minute ago, you said you're in the business to make money. Why sell it, then?
I'm seventy-three years old.
You just wanna get out of the fooling with it?
Okay.
Well, and I think, would it be fair to say you can also develop the property that you're sitting on?
We got almost three acres of property that we could develop.
Yeah, because that's, that would be where the additional new customers would generate from. So I guess you probably don't build it with condos or townhouses or something, yeah?
And on financing, how much would you have to finance for it?
If you, if you bought it, would finance eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Option one doesn't.
That's option two.
Yeah, that, option one has nothing to do with financing.
Correct.
Yeah.
I like option one.
Well, I like it, too, but I, I'm like you, Mr. Seifer, and I like to make money, and I like to safeguard the city's money. So the way I look at the proposal is your proposal, and then I would hope that the commissioners and the mayor would support coming up with our counter offer, because, you know, you never take the first deal. So that's why I think we need at least.
No, y'all didn't take the first deal the last time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, cost of city equals money.
So looking at this from the thirty thousand foot view, you make out, because we're taking the ability, you don't have to treat it yourself. You have no more expense there, you have no maintenance, probably very little labor, except contract labor if a line breaks. The plant is obviously gone. We make money on it, if we make more money than what it costs to treat it. So if I can get that question answered, you know, I'm all about this first plan. It gets us some customers, and maybe later on down the road, when you're eighty-three, we'll talk again about purchasing.
I would like to see it kept on our agendas, Jim. I know we're, too much of Hoffman's talking about three months, but I'd like to keep it on our agenda so we can look at it every time we have a meeting, and there might be some more questions that need to be asked and answered, and it may not take three months.
Would you agree that we discuss it and ask questions and research, but in no way feel obligated to make a decision based on the fact that the seller representing the offer today has agreed to three months before we would have to make a decision? I think that's extremely important. We need to do our research. We need to do a lot of research, and we need to come up with what the city thinks is a fair counter offer, and that can't be done in just a few weeks. So that's what I would, I have no problem with it being on the agenda, but I would hope no one would support calling something like this to a vote in the upcoming weeks.
No, that's not what I had in mind, nothing. I just wanted us to keep it on the agenda so we can keep it fresh in our minds, because as we said, we have been working on this thing maybe five years. He did offer us the plant one time at nine hundred thousand dollars, and we're dealing with one point seven.
No, 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 no.
Uh?
One point two.
One point two.
Which is less than what the engineer said it's worth. Still giving you a part.
I got you.
Bottom line, guys, we'll make seventy-one thousand dollars a year, possibly. Is it gonna cost us more than that to receive it? It's really, it's really that simple of a decision, but we just need to get those numbers from you on what it actually costs to treat thirteen and a half million gallons, so.
Frank, I wanna thank y'all for bringing this to us. We do have a lot to look at, a lot to think about, and if y'all are through with y'all's point, I might ask for any participation from the citizens.
We all, and we appreciate the opportunity. I would just put a fine point on the, on the rate issue. Anytime you increase rates, of course, we would have a similar rate increase, too, so we would continue to, that rate would continue to escalate as you all raise rates.
All right, go for it.
I'm gonna leave my part with the city man.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public wanna speak?
I'll have one, one comment first, if I may.
All right.
Sorry. Jim, do we have an established wholesale rate, published rate? So this is something that we've created, that we're, that they just created for us?
Correct, yes, we do not have a whole rate, wholesale rate established for us to work.
Okay, so that's something that we can also think about, is establishing our own for future purchases of systems, if Mexico Beach ever did wanna come online or something to that effect. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am?
Someone in the back?
Hi, ma'am.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're a long ways off from it.
I talk pretty loudly. I'm a former engineer's employee in San Francisco for forty-five years.
Will you come onto the podium?
Okay, fine.
And state your name and sign in for us, please, ma'am.
I'll be signing in first, so.
It doesn't matter, whichever you feel like doing.
Heck, work. My name is Karen Mason. I just acquired property on Pelican Walk Lane, April Fool's Day. As of two days ago, I feel like the fool, I am the fool. There is sewage. We were trying to pick back up a fence that broke, and we picked it back up, dug the holes, and the sewage smell was unbelievable. The realtor never told me anything about this. I've talked to some neighbors, they said this has been an ongoing problem. I'd like to know several things. One, why is this treatment plant owned by a private entity in the first place? Isn't it usually owned by a city or county entity? Or do you all just do something different down here?
Developers can do their own.
They can do their own? Okay, when you guys go out and do your review and your inspection or whatever, please come to the backyards, because we're gonna have to put a lot of soil on that ground and clean it up. I was so disgusted with it, I said, "And we're trying to improve the property." I was so disgusted with it, I said, and we're trying to improve the property, but, you know, if it keeps going like this, you're gonna lose revenue, tax revenue, from people that are gonna move out. And I just talked to neighbors two days ago, that this has been ongoing for ten years. Okay, maybe it's right, maybe it's wrong. I do know that the day I looked at the backyard, it happened to be dry, and I have a problem with it. It's not been like that since, okay? And I'd also like to know, this report that y'all keep referring to, um, is it a public document that can be reviewed?
It is now.
Because I would like to, uh, if I have to go online to get it, I'd like to, uh, find the website.
Ms. Charlie can get that for you after.
Okay, this, this just sounds really weird to me, and I was really disappointed to find that when I went up on the hill, I asked the realtor what the tri, the ponds were. She says, oh, they're not operating anymore. And I said, does that mean that that concrete structure over to the, uh, east is shut down? She said, yes. Okay, so I've been lied to by the realtor, which I'm gonna be dealing with her, and, um, you're gonna see me at your meetings, 'cause this, I dealt a lot of wastewater treatment issues with the permits and the civil works projects we worked with for forty years in San Francisco. I have a lot of experience, and I'm an environmental planner, and I would hate to see the city acquire something that they shouldn't, but I would like to see the thing improved a lot, because when my boyfriend came in with his shoes after working on that, um, fence in the backyard, I said, what is that smell? And I had to make him take his shoes out outside the sunroom, because I couldn't even stand it. And then I wouldn't let him come in the house, 'cause he was barefoot, but his feet still smelled. So, you know, what am I gonna do? I got a backyard I can't use, I got, I've got a storage shed in the back, nothing, you can't go back out there unless you're wearing rubber boots. And the smell was horrible, I mean, as soon as we dug the hole, the water came right up, it was that far from the top of the grass. Okay, so, I'm concerned extremely about the environmental impacts, not only to the community, but the health environment to our, us as citizens of Port St. Joe and a county. So, that's all I wanna say, and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. That's enough.
Mr. Grantland, is, is Pelican Walkway on, uh, east side?
I, I do believe, is that correct?
We're on the south side of, um, and we're on the north side of ninety-eight, uh, right behind where.
The old express lane was.
Express.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't pointing the finger to somebody else, so.
Now, that whole backyard, uh, by those ponds?
Yeah.
Okay, they're all so, just saturated, I don't even walk out there, even when I was walking on the, the fencing that was, had come down because of the hurricane. Okay, so.
Well, thank you very much.
If you'd like my phone number, I'd be more than happy to give it to you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, anyone else in the public? Anyone else?
Oh, oh, thank you, John.
Come on up.
Robert Brandt, Port St. Joe. It looks like most of the questions have already been, appreciate your time, it looks like most of the questions have already been answered, but I've kinda been jotting down, taking interest in, uh, I guess, what you call the voters, the St. Joe's money possibly could be spent on this. Uh, the first thing is, we got to ask ourselves, why is this for sale? Which that's already been answered, Mr. Seifer, he, uh, pretty much answered that, y'all, seemed like y'all understood what, what, what he said. Uh, the current condition of the plant, seemed like he, uh, he answered that also, I mean, just, what would it cost to get it back to top condition? What would, what would the budget be to operate? All the, all the ever answered since I wrote them down. How much would the city gain as for customers picking this up that was stuck on also? The scratches in it, though, fifty or sixty. Have y'all ever looked at this system, this wastewater system, uh, who, do y'all know who's running the system out? Uh, Mr. Seifer, do you know who's running it?
Who, who's running my system?
Yeah, who's actually running your system?
We have a, uh, Class A operator that.
Class, Class A, that's pretty much the best you can get, Class A?
Yeah.
You have like an A, B, and a C, right?
Correct.
Who, who, who was doing that?
Clint Davis.
Clint, okay, Clint, he's actually worked for y'all, right?
For a long time.
The system, uh, has it been completely evaluated since the hurricane? I, I missed that part. I knew there'd been some work on lift stations, but has it been, I know, you know, salt water, I don't know how far that salt water backed up into there? Uh, so, has, has the system been completely evaluated since then?
Uh, we'd have to ask Mr. Frank for that answer, I'm not sure.
And if we, if we went with option one, that would be their responsibility.
Right.
With, uh, what, what engineer actually did we get this, uh, President Rish or something other?
No, it was an independent engineer.
Independent, who, who was that?
Salthus, S.A.L.T.U.S. engineering.
So, they're, they're the ones that have done the study. Have y'all thought about getting y'all's own engineers maybe to look at it?
Well, if we go with option one, which I think that's what everybody up here would even own consider, we don't take ownership or responsibility of the condition of the plant.
See, well, okay, y'all, y'all got that paperwork out of, that's, we're talking the wa, not the lines, after the wastewater treatment.
We wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Regardless, y'all not, y'all not thinking about that, but I heard something about the county maybe taking that up.
No, the county would, would be giving four hundred thousand dollars for a lift station, a brand-new lift station, 'cause you gotta pump it from where it is to our dry line.
I heard something about maybe doing away with, uh, with part of the wastewater plant if y'all took it over, that was an option.
They have wastewater plants, sir, the ones that they're currently operating. They currently have their own little lagoon behind Gulf Air.
Okay, so, that's an option, to sell that, after the county to take it over?
Doesn't belong to us, that would be up to Mr. Seifer.
To sell it to the county.
If our wishes are.
The development, okay, put, put, thank, okay, I'll tell you this then.
Yeah.
All, all I can say is I'll be real careful, maybe, uh, get your own engineer to check it out, because, there's a lot happened since the hurricane, Mike. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public?
All right. Uh, well, guys, some, uh, commissioners, Commissioner Langston, let's throw on your end.
I think I, I, I really look at, um, option one as being, um, my choice, um, but right now, just wanna do a little bit more research, see what's, uh, what's going on, um, between the numbers, and then, um, we'll see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Eric, I think, uh, option two is just out of the question, uh, first, we don't have the money yet, uh, to do that, but, uh, I do have another, another topic, um, may I feel entertained, just for a moment? I was walking down Reed Avenue today, and down where they were tearing down, uh, there's a big construction dumpster, have you seen it? Sitting right in about eight parking spots on Reed Avenue that has dug into the blacktop and ruined one of the parking spaces already. Uh, there's, there's been other damage, there's been the same truck that damaged the Welcome to Port St. Joe sign, uh, also smashed up two curbs as he was driving over it. Uh, oh, and I forgot to mention, a light pole has been busted down, a full light pole laying on the ground. Jim, are we doing anything to get renumerated for the damage on that stuff?
Yes, sir, we had actually had a couple of complaints before, so that we have been working with the police department to contact, so yes, sir, we have been working on it.
And is there any way, can we find out whether he's pulled a demo permit or not? We need to move that trash can somewhere else. I don't know what to tell him where, but it's just sitting there taking up valuable spots, and these business owners probably don't appreciate that. That's all I've got.
Uh-huh. Just so you.
I, I think, um, everybody's on board with maybe looking at option one, uh, but again, too, we just, we need to make sure we got teeth and, and some kind of agreement. Um, and attorney can help with us on that, that piece of it, that the customers are out there protected along with, uh, the city, us, so, um, the other thing I was gonna mention, if you'll entertain this as well, uh, uh, there's been some discussion about a fire truck, um, one of our fire trucks maybe being purchased.
Yes.
Um, uh, and I believe we tap a fire. Um, can we just put that, if you'll, would put that on the agenda for next, the next meeting?
You?
Yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you to the owners of that system, uh, the Gulf Air Group, I appreciate the information, appreciate the attorney's, uh, information. Um, uh, the one thing I got out of this, uh, fact-finding mission that I think made me feel a little bit more at ease is a commitment from the seller that we can, uh, have three months to gather information, continue to speak to people. I think the hearing from a resident who has a house that is being serviced by this group, and there obviously is an issue, that may take a month alone to find out, why is there sewer in her backyard? Uh, so, thank you for coming and, and giving us that information. There's a lot of things to this deal, uh, not just the money, so, uh, I, I was kinda surprised to, to hear a three-month, uh, timeframe for an answer, because I know that this item surfaced almost to the week of last year, because I was sitting in the audience listening when Commissioner Buzzett was in this chair, and there was discussion about a workshop, and then Commissioner Buzzett was the one that questioned, well, why aren't we having a workshop if no one's even heard from the owners about purchasing it or a price, and it was scrubbed? And now, nearly to the week, uh, we have this rise again, and I don't mind saying that I've had people in the public come to me and say, well, they wanna get this done before the next election, the one we're currently, uh, looking at in just a few weeks. So, I, I don't like politics being merged with city business, especially purchases of this amount, so I'm grateful and thankful to the owners for giving us the time that we need, so thank, that's all I have, man.
And I was just echoing what Scott said, you know, we, there are a lot of questions we need to look at. I do think in the long run, this might be a good deal for the city. When it's a good deal, I'm not sure, but I definitely will not be voting for anything that won't make the city money. Definitely will find out, do some research before I make that kind of decision, but if it is making the city money, it'd be an easier decision. So, that's where I stand on it right now, and, uh, hopefully, we'll get all of this worked out in the next three months, and, uh, we'll go from there. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.